Turn it to where it'll show on. Yep, that should be it.
Okay.
The time is now six thirty-three. And we'll get started. Stand for the invocation and the prayer.
Oh God, we ask you as a group to lead our steps, to lead our thoughts in this meeting, that we do the best for this community. It is our desire and our hearts' will to do what you lead us to do for the betterment of this community. We ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with our little call. When Allison start? Allison's there, babe.
James, yeah.
Pam Reed.
Who is the other one?
Kathy O'Neill.
Larry Perry.
Okay. Okay, so some announcements real quick. We are incorporated officially. We got the stamp.
Happy dance.
Happy dance, okay. The board election passed. Happy dance. Happy dance again. The commerce market is going to be on June the tenth. Cleveland fireworks is June the thirtieth. The Travers Jam Fest is July the first. And the bathrooms in the park are operational and were power washed and cleaned down, and they look very, very nice. The only thing not working is the showers, and they're supposed to come back and work on those when they get the park. Just tell us.
No, they're happy to.
They're happy. Is there any other announcements that y'all may have? Okay, we don't have any citizens, so I guess we don't have any citizens input.
Oh, on June fourteenth, they are having a flag day ceremony on the park.
Good, June fourteenth, okay. What time? The whole day?
No.
Those are really nice. You know, I watched from afar the last one, and it was really, really nice.
Yeah, it was in the afternoon.
Yeah, it was in the afternoon. I'm looking for that. So I don't remember what we were doing, but we had left to go somewhere, and we went into the park and saw what they were doing because we didn't know it. And it was really pretty. It was really nice.
Well. I'll find out tomorrow then I can announce, you can announce it.
If council, okay. Any other announcements?
We had a good memorial day event in the evening at the park.
At the park, yeah.
Didn't get a whole lot of people, though.
Yeah.
And I don't understand.
Yeah, I think.
We're so fortunate to have a park like that, three vet clubs right here in our area, and people just don't seem to.
I think it's a matter of advertising and knowing that it's going on. I think that's one of the problems that we're having. Yeah, because a lot of people didn't know about that one.
But they're anomalies.
And plus, a lot of people were out of town, too.
I guess I can make an announcement that I'm working on that for the websites to make sure that there's a spot for events, and they'll be able to actually subscribe to be able to order anything sent out.
Being signed would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we'll move on to the consent agenda. So everybody will get their minutes and your salary and financial report in.
Put it down, wait. Done with stuff.
So we have paid on yet so far. Is this the check for the bathrooms? Yes, it is the check for the bathrooms.
Make the motion to approve it, miss.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What other goods to be paid?
Goods to be paid, I know that we have one out for remo it for ninety dollars. You can do detail.
Those donations paid, right?
Yeah, those are the ones that we'd actually pay, and usually I probably tell you what everyone's out. The only other one that's out right now is one that we mow it for ninety dollars. It's kind of.
But the dumpsters gone now?
The dumpsters are gone. The building is beautiful. The building is beautiful now that it's all cleaned out.
What's this clay footage?
Oh gosh, what would you say it was?
I think it's a little bit more than we had discussed last time. I got to looking at it without all the weeds over there, so.
It's about eighteen foot wide. The building is approximately eighteen foot wide. What the width of it, and it's about sixty-five foot long.
Okay. Eighteen by fifty-five.
At least seven ninety.
That's like thirty, how do you?
Yeah. Well, no, because it's not quite as big as my house. My house is only twelve thirty.
It's twenty foot wide, it'll be thirty, I believe.
It's probably eighteen by sixty-five. Let's see what that is on. Eleven seventy.
That's good.
And plus, it's got upstairs, right?
No. It's all one. It doesn't have anything.
Oh, okay.
So we made the motion that to approve the expenses. Approve the expenses paid, which is twelve thousand nine hundred sixty-seven twenty-five.
A second, yeah.
And also to be paid, which is ninety dollars.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the bank statement.
Right, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we shall leave along. Wanting to discuss movies in the park. That's here, it's up here. Hey, Harry. Come on in. He's a star.
He looks like.
He only has two hands.
We just talked about the announcements in the consent agenda. Just sorry.
You guys are ready to study?
Yes.
Sorry.
Well, we put you in every position. We put you in every position.
Oh.
We just need to start talking about movies in the park.
Yeah, I wanted to.
It's several nights around about me.
Six of them.
Okay. Okay, so movies in the park. Oh, wait a minute, we didn't do the men. Yeah, we did.
So we did?
Yeah, we did, sorry. Movies in the park, so we talked about this last time, and we were going to. Start to.
July fifteenth.
July the fifteenth for the movies in the park. Okay. Do you need popcorn, my girl?
Yes.
Yes?
Can we buy all that stuff?
We've got the projector, we've got the screen, we've got all that ready to go. We just need to.
And test it.
Yes.
So I will be out for the month of July, so we'll need to keep that posted.
Okay.
Still in the box.
And it is a blow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so as soon as I can get it from him, then let's go ahead and out and test it, so we can make sure.
And I'd like to get Phil Crean's sound system to make sure that everything's going to check out when we do that.
We should do all that before we make a broadcast announcement when we have the movie.
Right. Yeah, so.
I think we should test it.
Test it.
Test it before.
Yeah. Yeah, that's sort of, yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking we need to test it in the next week or so, so that we can get it settled.
Yeah, what we can do, we can do a test over my shop, and she said, on slow environment, no wind, no nothing. Bring the projector.
Okay.
Bring the sound, we test, we go with the walls. And that's it.
When would you be available for that?
Just like now, and so you can go through something.
I'm working out. I get back here about five thirty.
That's fine. Wait, popcorn, be watching.
Okay, so we've got a movie. It's called The Impossible. That's what we're going to use, so if you're going to test it, we're going to go in. Yeah. Yeah. I'm having a variety of these that are Christian based movies that I bought. I bought along the way, and they're brand new. And so we can, we've got probably thirty, forty, maybe even fifty movies that we could just keep playing.
And it does say that it's instantly streamed and downloaded, so I can just take the little code on the back and download that.
Kathy, your fire unit is put the lights on, so I don't know if it'll bring the battery or it's okay like that.
Why turn on my touch now?
Burn it off.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to test it this next week.
Do you want to?
I'll have to get with Bill on that, but yes, because he has that. But he said he would give the music or everything we needed, because it does hook up with aux, so he said it should be fine.
All right.
So.
I'll get with him.
Allison's going to deal with Bill Crean. So we're not going to use Chris's, I guess.
Right, I'm not sure what was said last time on that. I just know that Bill's, he had it all, he'd be more than happy to do that.
That sounds perfect. Either way, it's fine with me.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as we get it done. Okay, so I need y'all to get back with me as soon as you can test it, so we can work it and start working on. Advertising, yes.
Okay.
Do we have, sorry, do we have a backup of that same or a backup movie just in case that day the test doesn't work? Or I don't know, just to have a second.
Right, tons of movies, yes.
Okay, bring a second one just in case. Anything just.
Okay. Kathy, were you going to get with the fire department and the house refreshments?
How much day was this? Huh? What day is it with you?
July the fifteenth.
Oh, fifteen foot.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. I mentioned it, and they were.
It's two days after the business meeting.
Actually, all right. Maybe I need to change that to the following week. Okay. Okay. So I think we're pretty well set on that then. We've got that kind of covered for I am.
Right.
Okay. Anything else y'all want to add to that about the movies in the park?
Have we gotten with the high school kids?
No.
Are we going to have like hot dogs or something?
Fire department's going to do.
What's that?
The banquet, okay.
Now, watch our pickles.
You know, they gotta have those. We gotta have those in the movie.
For me, it's the popcorn, the drink, and a pickle.
Yes.
I mean.
I do all that plus the cup.
Plus burgers, plus.
That's a bit much. Okay, so we want to get that going as quickly as we can.
Yes.
Out there. Kathy, we want to get that going quickly.
Okay, do we have, sorry, do we have a rain day just in case something?
Oh, a backup date, okay. So this is on a Saturday.
Correct.
So. What do we want to do about a rain day? Do we want to move it to the next weekend if it rains this out?
There was something about the twenty-second.
My name's Armandine Gray.
The thirteenth.
And actually, I might have to move that. I just discovered me and Larry both will be there if we do it that day, because that's when our county thing is. Our county planning and zoning is that week. Okay, so the.
Larry, I'm lishing, I'm learning. Picking it all up.
Okay, it's your five. The. I don't have, you don't have anything on there.
Okay.
So maybe it's June.
Then what time we're going to do it in that chapter?
Pit desk. We, our dark time, dark thirty.
Yeah, there we go.
We would say dark thirty, because we won't know what time we can start until.
Surely around July first.
We'll do a makeup rain day the next weekend.
Next weekend.
It's the fifth of July fifteenth.
What day are we doing the first thing? We're doing that July fifteenth for the.
Oh, well, what is that night?
People's church.
Okay.
My church, depending on what religion you are.
Yeah.
So it's Saturday?
Okay. So let's make it the twenty-second. So is our rain day.
Okay, I'm thinking flag day is six o'clock open at one.
Six o'clock, okay. On June fourteenth, flag is six p.m.
On June fourteen.
On June fourteenth.
Flag, exactly.
Flag, okay. All right, so we need to get on that real quick. Start. Okay, meet and greet is when? Okay. Yeah, we had put down for meet and greet on the. Well, that's the next thing on here, so we're just kind of. Well, first of all, I need a motion for us to have the rain day. Yes, actually, I need that.
I'll make a motion for us to have the rain day for the movies in the park for July twenty-second. Should things get rained out.
Very seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So. We had talked about, let's move on to the next one, and we had talked about. The meet and greet on the thirteenth, and I got my little calendar out and realized that that was not county planning and zoning, which Larry and I both are on. So we need to move that to the twentieth if possible.
Twentieth of July.
Twentieth of July. Do you have anything going on that you know?
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
For the meeting.
For the meet and greet.
I will be out the other month of July. So if it's August, then I'm good, but July.
July.
Most people take vacation.
In July.
Especially the second month, because the first month is camp.
That's true.
And the second month of kids.
Do you want to do it in August then? Instead? On the right, August? We can do that.
Probably be busy for the businesses that are open in July anyways, because all the tours.
Well, there's some comes to each other. Do you know?
Third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-four, thirty-one.
Seventeenth or?
What is the free tax school stuff weekend?
Yes.
We gotta be away from that one, because then people will. Unless we do it.
We're done on Thursday.
On Thursday, so probably good to do it on Thursday, and then the free tax on that same coming weekend. That way we'll make sure that everybody's in town, because people will like to go and buy school stuff, so that one.
So shall we, can we put it on the seventeenth, and then when we come and have more, how far that text and venue, we can.
Because I know the seventeenth, right?
August seventeenth.
August seventeenth.
Because it's usually in the last weekend, and August isn't like a.
Yeah.
Maybe it's online, but I don't have signal, but I think it's online. Free tax, school weekend. Normally, it's like the third or the second weekend or something like that.
So.
Yeah, no, I got notes.
So the last weekend in August is twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if we did it at twenty-four. That might be right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put it for the twenty-four and the one before, and then follow up with that.
Okay. Twenty-fourth of August work for y'all for meet and greet.
What?
Twenty-fourth of August work for y'all for meet and greet. Okay, so I'll make a motion to change our meet and greet from the prior date we had scheduled till seventeenth of August.
Should I give the motion?
Seventeenth or twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Or twenty-fourth, the twenty-fourth of August.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. And I came, I got this really cute idea that I thought would be really cute to be our theme, but Red Hot Business. I like that.
Red Hot Business?
Red Hot Business, and I found some little boxes of red hots on Amazon that we can.
The book orders.
That can do book orders. I think Larry should dress up like a hot red hot. I just thought that would be a cute, cute thing to do, you know? You know, Red Hot Business.
Yeah, that was cute.
Good.
I can put that on the flag.
Yeah, put that on the flag.
I can go red hot.
Red Hot Business, yeah. And I talked to the fellow at the Small Business Bureau for the Dallas area, which completes our county, and he is going to try to come to our thing.
Awesome.
So, and I'm sure we'll get workforce again, and talk to them again, because they enjoy coming out, so I think we'll get them. But the biggest thing is I want to see us. Get out beforehand, a couple of weeks beforehand.
Right.
Everybody to have a flyer that we can get our hands on.
I can try and make sure that's available, like.
Yeah, I guess that'd be.
We can do it within the next week or so. We need to change the date, we would just change the date.
Yeah. That would be super. Okay. And do we want to do like we did last time, where we all brought stuff? I've got some red tablecloths that you can use already. Well, I already had some red tablecloths, some extra red tablecloths, and so I thought, come on, we can use those. If I can get rid of them out of my house.
Are you going to bring candy cans too?
Red hots, fresh hots. Just red hots, a little box boxes of red hots.
I love them.
I do, too.
Cinnamon ones, spicy ones?
Yeah, cinnamon spicy ones, yeah.
Everybody's businesses are going to be on fire.
Those chop rappers are, wow. We're not going to get the chop rappers. I want a little red hot, a little tiny red hot, so we'll do those.
Yeah.
And let's just try to decorate it ever pretty awesome. Have some little buckets that I had at the house that had little blue and red stars on it, so we can use that for table decorations. So I'm thinking of all the stuff I have and what combination is. Okay. So if that works for you guys, then we'll start shooting for that date.
Is that at the park?
The meet and greet we're going to do at James's place at Deer Run Coffee Works.
It is with you, James.
That's the better name.
It better be.
Thank goodness we have James, he is so good to us. Okay, anything else we need to discuss with the meet and greet?
Flyer is the.
Yeah.
And a black and wrap or something.
That's a good idea.
How do you want to build the attendance?
We could, you know, do a, you know, a draw for a gift card or something.
I don't know, you know, I could go later and be surviving.
It's one step closer.
I'm sure that the EDC could afford a gift card or something.
Yeah.
Gift card, wrap. So put that on there, she gift card, wrap. Not wrap, but drawing, drawing for gift card.
Do we know if any local restaurants like Rancheros, they can have gift cards, or we can do it, you know?
If not, they could probably just write like a little, I can make one up farm if they needed to off the computer. That's such a good.
Yeah.
If they would volunteer to do that, or, you know, volunteers would pay them.
Yeah, that way, yeah, we give whatever prize, but it's the investments.
Making sure it stays in the.
I like that idea. I like that idea. Let's talk to them, talk to them. Wish I'd known earlier, I was at Rancheros just a few minutes ago.
I go every Friday.
Yeah, there's fifty other restaurants here in West LA that we can ask.
Dale's.
Dale's.
Dale's is real good to give stuff, and Rancheros is real good.
How many other restaurants we don't? Well, we have the Bitten too. Bitten, our fish and nutrition.
Fish and nutrition.
I like my.
They have the good stuff there.
Yes.
But I think if we, if the meeting will be on Thursday, they can actually spend on Friday night with their family.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe what, fifty bucks?
Fifty bucks is what I was thinking about that line.
Fifty bucks fulfilling family of two adults and two kids, isn't it?
Usually. Things don't want to work. But it sure takes a dent out of.
Yeah, yes, it does.
So, yeah, okay.
What time is the meet? They're from five to seven.
Okay. Yeah, the meet and greet will be from five to seven. Okay, so I guess I need a motion to give the gift. Make a motion that we. I'll make a motion that we can purchase a gift card for giving away at the meet and greet.
Or a gift certificate.
Or a gift certificate for the meet and greet on the twenty-fourth of August.
Should I give the light?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else we need to discuss about that?
Um, who are, are we still going to invite the same sources that we used last time?
I'm sorry.
Are we going to extend the invite to the sources we used last time, like the people from workforce and police department and the city department and?
I know.
Did we get them?
I, I know. I, I do know that workforce will be happy to come in, you know, because I, when we finish. That one, I talked to them and they said that they would be happy to come out for our next one. And then, and like I said, I talked to the regional manager of the Small Business Administration. We brought it to a conference on small businesses over in Temple, Texas, on my own dime, by the way. And, um, he was interested in coming to do that.
About three days ago, I met with Sherry, that lady from the workforce.
Workforce.
I met with her, I dropped my card. And I mentioned her, we have another, uh, presentation or another meeting week day. So she said, all right, I'll just talk to her for five minutes.
That sounds great. Your cherry's really sweet. I think that'll be great. And yes, we will talk to. See who we can get, you know, from local area to like the police department and all that to come. So let's see. Okay, um, anything else we need to discuss about the meet and greet? Okay. Let's go on to the status and property cleanup. Okay, property at fourteen hundred East Highway two seventy-six. The building is cleaned out. And it didn't cost us anything to clean it out. We donated everything that was of any value to the fellow who cleaned it out for him to do the work for us. So that is done. I'm so proud of that building. We got it cleaned down, because if you saw it, when I first saw it, and you saw it now, as Larry can attest to, it is tremendously different than it was.
No, it was pretty, which is tough work.
Yeah.
I know that.
Yeah.
Good job, Larry.
It's a building of air conditioning.
Does it have air conditioning? Not at this point.
No, I think a lot of work has to do in, in insulating walls, insulating and checking the roof and all of that.
One of the, one of the things, the way I, I looked at it, is it's a stone building. It's a, it's a mason building. And, and the best thing in the world to do on the inside, if you want to, uh, put walls up, your two by fours and stuff. Is to just have someone come and blow insulation, just like we do in an attic or whatever. Because there's a lot of holes and there's a lot of, uh, big cracks in, in the building. This would go in and swell up and, and close that hole off. And at the same time, it would give you a coldness inside the, inside the building, once you put your walls up. Or whatever, whatever you want to put them up with. If you just put regular insulation and stuff like that with the stone, the stone leaks of water, has a water texture. So when it rains, the stones get wet and the, it drips and the stone sucks it in like, and it drips out. With, uh, with this.
You could destroy your radiant barrier.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna create mold. So what I think what Larry's talking about is spraying insulation.
Yes.
Close it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do know, um, a couple of companies that do that. I can see if they can just.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think we're not at that point yet. I think, uh, right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Actually, oh, actually, Larry, I'm glad you brought it up, because this week is basically we need to know.
Yeah.
We do, Larry, so you, you're perfect to say it.
Yeah.
I just think that at this point, we're going to have to worry with the outside of it first and then do the inside of it. So, uh, because it's going to cost. And we don't want, we don't want to be, uh. How do I say this? We don't want it to be a money pit for us just yet. So, um, we, we want to take care of the building, we want to make it look nice, we want it to be a good building to be an example for the rest of the city.
The final, the final outcome for that building will be to set up our EDC offices and conference, conference room there, right?
Yes. Yes, that is our ultimate goal, our ultimate goal.
That's not going to make the whole building empty.
Probably not.
Because people are complaining that they don't have an inside space for the market on the left.
Is it big enough for that? It's not big enough for the whole market on the left.
No, not the whole thing. But like, the lady that does candles, that's the reason I was asking if it was air conditioning, she can't come out. Yeah.
I'm going to help to candles.
Think about it, the location of the building versus where the booth and the tent are located is for the market. So I don't know if that will be a driving factor for her, want to be successful on sales.
Well, let's, let's just take it one step at a time and try to get. Working this out and figuring it out, and then we can worry about who's going to be used to building, once we get it in a place where it's occupable. It is not, at this point, something that we can occupy.
What is better?
But it's so much better than it was. Okay, so, um, that's kind of the status of property cleanup right now. All right, um. Any other comments want to be made about, about the property? Pretty bad.
Do you have any relation that?
We did not, um, but there are some things that we need to address later on that's down in the new business.
Oh.
Yeah, I did something.
Okay, so if, if no other comment on, on that part of it, we'll go to the websites. Also, it's been doing a lot of research for us.
So, um, going through, uh, godaddy.com to have them do the hosting and to create the website, of course, you can do the free. But if you do that, then the godaddy is going to be in the URL, which we don't want to do that. So if you do just the business account, you can do it for, and the marketing business account, you can do it for eighteen dollars a month. And that gives me everything that we would need to, um, have it at just the dot com. But I also wanted to ask, because a lot of them are doing it the dot, um, org for the EDCs, but I think dot com is just a lot easier for people to remember. Or just go to anyways.
Yeah.
It is, true.
Yeah, they do have that one, but I think there's less like, the general public doesn't really go to those too often. So I think keeping the dot com would be the best option, but I just wanted to ask what they all thought about that.
It's for the EDC, right?
Yeah, the EDC.
We are a nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
So we also work with businesses.
Right, I guess, and that is an option to do as well.
Dot org, and that's why that is.
Yeah.
That's for business, so.
And who would maintain the website?
For now, I would, or even after, I could still volunteer for that, because it's not much to update. And I, I'm also, as soon as I get it up and running, whichever way we do it, um, I did one, I will have detailed instructions, so anybody in here can do it. It won't be just going in and typing in new information or uploading a document, so. Very user friendly, yes.
What a wonderful topic.
Okay, so I have started the websites on two different, um, platforms to see which one we prefer. I did it on the Wix and on the godaddy's, and also so I could compare the business prices, they're about the same. I think the other one is like nineteen dollars a month. For the marketing business where it'll give you all the premium features and, um, it actually does the automation. To where if they can go in and put in their information, then it will give them updates if we put new things on the calendar, because the landing page will have. Like our city page, it'll have a calendar with the events that they can click on, go straight to the information board, or just hover over and it'll tell them the information. And, um, if they did want to put their name, their email addresses in there, it would just automatically send them out an email whenever we put another event on there, so. I think that'll be a really good.
I think that'd be really good, you know, that the events will come through the email, I think that's a really great feature. Um, and it's still a way, you know, that we can, can highlight, you know, a, a business a month.
Yes, yeah, so that will also be on the, um, landing page, as soon as you go into it, it'll have, you know, um, the, of course, the header, which has our names and the, the. Task bar, I'm going to call it, you know, where you can select which pages you're going to, but then underneath that will have the. Thank you. It has the, uh, calendar and then beside it, I was going to have the business of the month advertisement. And then below that, it goes into, um, who we are. And from there, on the side panel, it will have actual individual pages that you can select, as well as the navigation menu at the top. Or it will have, um, business directory for all the businesses located in the town. And, um, the properties that we can tell them that are open for, you know, opportunity wise. And then, um, also the knowledge base, which will go through the laws and regulations. And, uh, I would like to be able to get the permitting fees and everything.
We can.
So we can get that information and put that on there as well. I wanted to just make it as much information as possible, so people can not have to try to search and find everything.
Deciding who the business of the month is. Until we have another way, we could say, okay, so if you come here at our meeting, that's when we decided what business is going to be that month. And if nobody shows up, we put all the businesses and you draw one up. That way it's fair. I would like to also maybe do, where we highlight the new business and the old business.
Right.
So we could have two different pots to draw from.
Right.
You know, of the newer businesses and of the older businesses.
There is also going to be a spot for, um, recent projects or projects that were, you know, we've already approved, right?
Success stories too.
Yes, there's test among the pages where they can actually go in, the businesses that we have helped or the individuals, and they can go in with their own test.
So going back to your initial, I believe, we should get a dot org and a dot com. I'm going to tell you why, because I, I, I experienced that before. Uh, let's say somebody likes the name of my business and I have a dot org. They will go to a dot com and the dot com will be a driving factor. So how do you deal with both of them? Since we're in a EDC, we are a nonprofit organization, our main will be the dot org one. If someone puts the dot com, EDC West Walkney dot com, it will drive them directly to the dot org in the back.
It redirects.
The back door.
Exactly.
Okay, that sounds like.
A good plan.
And that is an option, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, because maybe, um, somebody else, maybe not in this state, maybe somewhere else.
Right.
They, they, they tend to be called the same, but it's maybe dot com.
Right.
So then we can use that factor.
Right, in that way we're covering both bases, yeah, and that is an option to just, um, claim that name. And it has a redirect as soon as they put any, either one of them in the search bar, it'll automatically do that.
And after the first year, it's going to cost twelve dollars or something like that.
Yeah, I don't even think it's that much.
To be bitched to do that, eight, nine dollars or whatever it is.
So this is a heck of a lot cheaper than what we were doing before. Uh, so the chair will entertain a motion at this point.
Do we already have a that whatever name?
That's one thing, I wanted to also say that it would probably be best to keep West Walkney EDC. Because that's, I mean, that's what it.
That's who we.
The most simple, basic way for anybody to find us, you don't want to put a different name to have some kind of play on words or anything, because then it's not going to come up on their search. The most simple thing is West Walkney EDC.
I agree.
I like that.
Okay, so then.
West Walkney EDC dot org.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that sounds.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, get a domain register owner dot org and dot com for the West Walkney EDC.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I also now, I need to know, uh, when we would be able to do the payment for it, because that would be. On the features of getting it up and running for the dot com.
So when you, you know, are you ready to get?
Um, I have the website actually on two places, like I said, so they're basically the same, just one looks a little bit more clean and crisp, which is the godaddy one, of course. But then there's certain features I wasn't able to do on there, like integrating the, um, Google Calendar where.
They can have.
They do, but it's, yeah, like, there's, to do it in the, to the HE or HTML codes, it wasn't working from not having it already in the dot com where it would have that feature available. So once we make that payment, then those features would become available and I can actually integrate it on there.
There is a huge advantage of the unit two, we got godaddy, because, um, we can now, we buy the domain, we can all have an email address.
Correct.
And whatever at West Walkney EDC dot org.
Right.
The people can email us.
I'll mark that, right.
With instead, also all of the features of Microsoft Word.
Right.
Excel and all of that will be activated, added to the each of the emails, so we can have a full blown.
Right.
Uh, based on the email, uh, so we can use Word, Excel, any Microsoft PowerPoint included in the payment.
Right.
So that's a huge plus.
And, um, as far as that goes, um. Our loss turned off, never mind.
Payment.
So we were on payment.
Yes.
Okay, so when do we need to have a payment ready?
Um, as, as, the sooner the better, that way I can have those features available and integrate the things that I need to be able to integrate that aren't available.
So here's what I need, you know, to be able to have.
I'm going to say something about the payment too.
Okay.
Um, because I experienced that and I'm still fighting my domain. I do recommend that we set up automatic renewals.
Right.
To a bank card or a credit card that is listed to the EDCs. Why is it? Because let's say she's taking care of it today, right? Two years from now, when it's due, we don't know what's going to happen to us. So happens that we don't know and we are already six months doing that, somebody else take our name.
Uh, right.
Because we, we made the payments, so I think we should make it automatically that renew.
Will it do an automatic draft from our banking account?
I'll have to see if it does it from the bank, I think it, I know it does.
Debit card, we do debit card, yes.
Because right now, we don't have a debit card, we don't have a credit card.
Right, we think you just need the cities. Yeah, that was my opinion.
And we really need.
Have we have a checking account, so we should have.
If we have, if we have a checking account, we should have a debit card. We could, yeah, we can do it with a debit card, because of online payment, you know, right, prepayment, can we not do that?
Well, it doesn't, it's just options of credit and debit.
Yeah, yeah, we can do it with a credit, uh, debit.
Okay, so I guess what I will do is tomorrow I will talk to them about getting us a debit card. I don't know, isn't that crazy? They only have one credit card for the whole city. And they use it for.
Every, all the departments.
All the markets.
That's why I was mentioning you, because I knew you'd have to get with.
So I will check into that, but in.
Actually.
Two weeks, we just got another week in hand. With her. Okay, so, uh, the chair will entertain a motion about us paying for this.
I make a motion that we pay for the, uh, website to be able to have the features, it's only eighteen dollars a month for all the features, so. And that's hosting, that's everything.
I say that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
One more thing. One more thing that I would like to mention about that, and that's gonna be for the benefit of market. Later, when we get everything set up and running, we can help in matter of that, we can have the um. The store option on our website. And people can pay for the fees we serve in whatever uh for the marketing, like you know, credit card. If that's something that we're willing to get on later on, that can be long term.
Well, I think until they make a determination of who's going to, yeah, we're gonna have to. Stay back out of the way for just a little while, we know what's going on.
But we will, there will be a place.
You know, as the EDC, we will do everything we can to help market on the way.
Right, and and we'll have the advertising spot and it will link, like I said, to any events, any business has event, they wanna put on anything.
If they later on have their own website, when they click on their advertisement on our page, it will drive the people straight to their page.
Right.
Yeah.
Or their Facebook page too.
So that's a good, good, good deal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So uh, anything else we need to discuss on the websites?
No, I mean, as far as what I've got on there right now, it should just be, I'm not gonna say like next week or anything, but it shouldn't be too much longer. Because I'm getting most of it on there. It'd be just the um knowledge base that will take the most time, but we can always put the landing page up coming soon on that page.
Do we have a good promo video from the city? Something thirty seconds.
I've been working on that too, because Chad has a drone that. For whatever reason, he doesn't use very often, so I thought I'd get in there and try to use that thing.
We just put it this way, the city doesn't have any backup resources, we need to work on our own.
Yeah.
To promote.
I thought it could just come from this.
So we need any else on websites?
No.
Okay. Millennial Science is the company that's the next thing that comes up, that we um spent money for a sign for. And um, so I had done a lot of research and I had discovered this man has no assets. And is indicted in Smith County for multiple, multiple. Deals like he did us. Yes, and uh it is uh the DA. As soon as they can locate him. He will, all his assets have been taken, so we have no way of running anything. We we can, we could. We could sue, but it would cost us more than we could get back. So there's no sense even.
Pursuing it, yeah.
Pursuing it, it took me a long time to finally. Find out this much information, but.
That's good information.
Yeah.
And how did you also record that, Luke?
Oh, well, they 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 captured these assets from what I was hoping. So, yeah, these probably have to be seized to go down. So we're we're out, we're just out that money, that's just the way it is, you know, and that's all we can do.
Did we write off that from the? Oh, yeah, so we've been, we've been.
We chopped that one off to experience. Yes, exactly.
That's a very expensive.
Very expensive experience that was, and why then I wasn't here? I'm sorry you weren't here. Okay, so um let's move on then to new business. Lakeside tech service is not here.
That was a good one, too.
Yeah, they weren't here. We we can, we actually, if we can, just make a motion so we can do that.
I'm gonna make a motion on item B from session nine of business to move after H because it's quite related. So I think by explaining H, we will understand why this business will ask for assistance.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye, okay. All right, so we're gonna start talking about things for the building thirteen hundred East Parkway. Okay, so we've had some ups and downs with FDC Electric. But uh to turn on the electric service is going to cost us about eight hundred dollars.
Wow, I have a question. Have you looked into the prepaid, just I know nobody likes that, but I do it at my house and I'm telling you, our electric bills are nothing. And our walls are not very insulated at that. It's really a lot better, you don't pay that big fee to get it gone.
No, the biggest problem is that it's commercial. And it's the biggest problem. Now, I understand that some of that money will come back to us as we pay our bill. So so it's mainly the deposit, it's about six hundred dollars worth of deposit. First, about six hundred dollars worth of deposit will come back and the rest of it is like your first electric bill.
Couple hundred dollars.
They don't trust us.
So, yeah, so.
We got some EDC, we won't pay property taxes on that.
No, we do not. So um I I believe we need electric service.
Definitely.
Definitely, and I wish we could have had it when we were bringing up the building. Um, but there was a lot of hiccups with that and. Because it's over five hundred dollars, I could not do, just do it without the board crew.
Has anybody told them that we are a nonprofit organization?
Absolutely.
Okay, because at times they will have some breaks for.
Yeah.
Situations.
No, they they knew that we were an NTU of the city, they knew we were nonprofit, they knew that we, you know, would properly do it from a draft. They knew all the things that would normally.
So then a hundred dollars is what it is.
Yes, we just need to make a motion, make that motion a movement. Yes, so I make a motion, we get the electricity turned on to property at thirteen hundred East Parkway.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does the city requires to have an inspection of that before turning on?
Uh, that is a good possibility, uh, we may have to do that, so. If so, I will be getting with Shannon to make sure we get a permit for that. And so that permit should.
Yeah.
We're just gonna have to pay, you know, to do, but that's part of turning on the electricity, so.
Years where I'm born with it, that property is being vacant for so many years. If the city requires for us to have a permit, that means that we may also need to have. An electrician on site to check before they turn on the power, that property's gonna catch on fire or something like that.
Yeah, I will tell you, he was running his generator for the electricity out there and everything was working fine. So that is a a plus and.
A generator? So you connect the building to the generator?
No, what we did, what we did was connect all all lines, extensions.
All extension lines.
From the generator.
Correct, so you didn't feed the building?
No, 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 because the wires are all broke against the wall. They're all in different things and I did, I couldn't figure out where what was coming where.
So that's something different.
See, that's why, that's why we can, he's a, he wants, he's pretty good electrician and. If we could have got the the thing, we would have worked with the power guy yet.
Yeah, well, we need to get them with city permits and see uh who is a, how many registered electricians do we have here in the city and when we to use one of them.
I agree, so I need a motion for that.
I made a motion that if needed, when we get the permit from the city to get the power into the thirteen hundred. Two seventy-six in West Walkney, uh, the EDC property, uh, we get. And we can use one of the registered licensed electricians here in the city, just in case we need it.
Does the uh FDC doesn't do that? They don't send their own person?
They deal from the meter to the pole, they don't deal with the, from the meter and to your circuit box.
They already have the power here and everything needs to be looked at too, though, right?
They need to be looking at it.
There's not a electrical box out there, the FDC would come out, oh, there are electrical box.
Should be a meter there.
They take the meters.
They take the meter, so the meter can is there.
It's a can, it's.
So they're gonna, they're gonna bring the meter, yeah, and then from the, from the meter can. To go to the, no, it goes to the circuit breaker box and we need the electrician to check from the circuit breaker box to all of the circuits inside. Because, I don't know, a rack and eating the wires or whatever it is.
So we will definitely. Okay, so I need to second on that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All these roofings. And they all, okay, so um. That's the next item is the roofing, so within your packets, I tried to do. They sent me these things handwritten on my telephone, a lot of them, and so I I just went ahead and typed them out because. Yeah, it's possible.
But they're not actually, but that's one thing I'd like to throw at more of these Texas painting. Because we're not gonna pay anybody eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars upfront.
No.
For anything.
Anything, no more signs.
We did, none of them did that, we don't have a sign for it.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
All right, so if they can't handle their business and use their money upfront, then we cannot be in business.
Which one is that one?
Northeast Texas painting, Johnny Taylor owner operated.
I didn't see that.
Is that the twelve thousand four seventy-one?
No, that's North, Team North Texas.
This is painting, well, it's expired painting, but.
I don't have that. Oh, I see, okay.
But Johnny, he says the material costs is due at signing of contract with remainder due when the job is complete.
So be the twenty-three ninety-eight.
So it's the twenty-three ninety-eight.
I still wouldn't do that. If they can't do their business without.
That's that's for painting.
We're talking, but he was looking.
Okay, let's.
It's that roof line, yeah, so I saw the roof line.
Yeah, let's let's go to the roof first, go back to the roof ones, okay. The roof one should be Ricky Shaw's Recovery Roofing. Paint King Renovating with Jefferson Jones, Team North Texas. And More Dynamic Roofing.
Do we know if the Paint King Renovators are licensed?
They all are licensed. I look for license, I look for things on their website that said they were insured, all that kind of stuff, whatever I was looking to get fixed.
Okay, so four.
So there's four of these, uh-huh, four of all roofing. So.
Happy is recovery roofing.
Yeah.
So.
What are your reviews?
Elaborate. Elaborate.
Well, they did a really good job.
So what we have, what we have currently is half the building has been done in a metal roofing. And whenever I had them come out, I had them check that roofing and they say that roofing is perfectly okay except for. Uh, where the screws are, they need some caulking around them or something.
So it's metal.
It's metal, right, and yes, they say.
All like this.
Yeah.
So no flack?
No flack, okay. The second half of the roof is a composite roof, it still has pitch, you know, and all that, but it's composite and it is in poor or shape. Uh, it doesn't have any leaks currently within the building on any part of it, but that composite has got to.
So it's shingles?
Shingles composite.
Okay.
But that's as far as the damage goes.
It's, it's, yeah, that's where the the damage is at.
But it's not a lot of that. It starts the.
They just, they, the shingles.
Yeah, they did check out um the, underneath the boards, all the boards are on the decking are good. So uh, they they said we were really lucky, since the composite is in such bad shape and all the decking is perfectly good and so never had any problem with them. Now, on these, y'all noticed, there's some of them that say they're just gonna put the, the roof over the composite. And then there's one that's gonna take down all the composites.
Yes.
So, you know, and we can, we can ask for all of them to do whatever, what you want to do, it'll just be a little extra money.
So, but most of the roof is metal against, oh, uh, shingles.
Okay, so half of it is metal.
Oh, half and half, okay.
Half and half is composite, which is shingles, yes. Now, I will tell you on more on their estimate, I told him we wanted to do it all in metal. That's what I've asked him all to do, because if you've got metal on the front, you might as well do it all the way, particularly. Right. It's good, sure. And he has shingles on here, which is not what I asked him to do, so I'm kind of like, I told him, I don't know, several other times, it kind of bothers me a little bit. If he didn't put it down with metal after being told that.
Kathy and I both have used Recovery Roofing Solutions.
Do we have garters there?
No, we do not.
So mold is the recovery roof, right?
Not sure.
Recovery roof, is that more?
Uh, this one. Recovery Roofing is Ricky Shaw.
Okay.
That's the one where you put the bucket base.
And how did that come?
He did write down.
Well, the only thing is he does, he's not doing it. Is removing the existing roofing. Putting some metal panel on top of it.
No, he wants to put the move, the metal over the.
If you, do you think remove the, you know, in in compared his price and.
Just redoing.
But I wonder what he's gonna charge to 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 do the demo and, yeah, because apparently that's what's bracing the prices, the ones that have the demo on there.
Yeah, I had a review of my place too. And it wasn't that bad. So I would ask.
Nobody's moving the shingles. Yeah, this guy here, sure, this guy here, North Texas, I said.
I didn't ask them to review the shingles and the reason I didn't is because everyone that I talked to said with the type of metal roofings they do now, they can put them right over the other. And it doesn't cause any problems, they all put it in.
But here is the problem to that, that property with the shingles the way they are right now is being in that position for who knows how long. That you may already have molded into it already. If you enclose that humidity with a metal roof which is going to amplify the heating to it, we end up putting mold inside the building. So I think to to keep it right off, we need to take the shingles off and then work over the day, putting the metal onto.
I agree, because when he came to our house, that was part of the problem, we had shingles and so. Free this owner, they put metal right on top and it all rotted out.
Yeah, he can't see the decking if you don't take. Okay, so we can ask them to do that, that may be a couple thousand dollars more on our our bid, but we can definitely ask for that.
Looking at these, you know, the scope varies significantly.
Yes.
So I think we should probably make a pretty clear scope and have a better idea.
Yeah, what I asked them to do, whatever I did, and I asked everyone on the same thing. I asked them to check the old roof and see what needed to be done with it. And everyone told me that the old roof was great shape, that it just needed caulking or something around the screws to.
Who told you about the caulking around the screws?
Every one of them.
Well, this one's required to have the screws.
That's the little bit part of it.
Okay. Okay, they have.
Ricky's replacing.
Replacing the screws.
And I have.
Yeah, because all the rubber things are gone. They need to, who, to go that route, the only person that quoted and spelt it out right was the Recovery Roofing. Installed the middle, uh, installed new screws into existing, because the problem is the washer. The rubber metal washer. And to fix that, you need to replace the screws. So this guy is right, if that was me, I just ask these two guys to quote exactly the same and then we make a, a decision. Over these two guys, because this is a painting company. This is the roofing guy and there's no details to it, so to meet the two processes, what are going to be Recovery Roofing and Non-Circuiting. Ask them to quote apples to apples.
Kim and I can program either, he was quoting here.
Okay, so the problem with, with putting it off is, that's that much longer than we'll be getting done. So Team Texas is twelve thousand dollars bid for that. And Recovery Roofing is sixty-eight, sixty-eight hundred. So my thought would be that we go ahead and ask Recovery Roofing and we just ask them to take. To take off the composite and then we would have everything else on here.
Now, we'd ask him to take it off in the price that he's quoted.
Yeah.
That would be my first thing, can you take it off in the price that you've quoted?
Exactly, exactly. So that's my motion.
This is not like the song where we don't know the guy, you know, and he's gonna run off with our money.
Yeah.
You know, we know this guy and know his worth.
And we're not gonna give him the money anyway, if it's done and we're happy with it. We're happy with it, this will pay.
Okay, so if you will go ahead and make your motion, it's.
I make a motion that we accept Recovery Roofing Solutions and give them the opportunity to include removal of the existing shingles in the same price that he's quoted.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Um. So we're staying to accept Recovery Roofing, but to tell them to remove for the same price and then add the metal.
Yeah.
On that.
Exactly, so.
Install new.
The only difference with he just taking off the other.
See, he will include in this price to remove the existing shingles.
Yeah.
And if he doesn't.
Fifteen hundred dollars, something like that.
So I would like a second motion on that we can go up to a certain amount more if he requests more.
I'll make a motion that if he should go up, I'd say no more than like fifteen hundred to two thousand, then we can accept the.
Recovery Roofing Solutions. Okay, so two thousand?
Yeah, I wouldn't go higher than that.
Okay, so two thousand dollars more.
You're not afraid to ask, huh?
Can I take seconds?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I. Um, Kathy.
Kathy.
Thank you very much, okay, now let's look at painting.
Good catch there, um.
Yes.
Good catch there.
Okay, um. So look at painting next.
Uh, I have a question. On the um, Northeast Texas painting, they're saying to replace sixty foot of the one by six by twelve fascia trim around the roof line. Would that not be included in doing some of the part or not? Okay.
Okay, so we, we're, uh, we look at this um. This building.
There's three bids on your right.
Yes, there, there's three bids. Um, it was hard finding to maybe would come out and paint. So, you know, this is kind of what we ended up with, I mean, that, that had something that was reputable. I mean, I could have gotten several ones that didn't have insurance, whatever else, but it was hard finding someone that had.
Met the requirements.
Met the requirements for what we need. These are the three that I got.
I bet you there's painters list that you know of the city.
Uh, I think there was. Yes, I can tell you right now.
I mean. Registered here within the city office.
I mean, as far as I could tell, that they actually have businesses, yeah.
Oh, business, yeah, being registered.
Okay, so um.
Nice, very so much.
Yes.
Well, the work varies a lot too. Ones replacing sixty feet of the fascia board and, and ones, uh.
East Texas painter.
Their smallest one's not replacing as much. Forty feet. Fifty feet, fifty feet.
Yeah.
That's ten feet. Which is not that much.
Called East Texas painter and uh, and Segro line in West Milwaukee.
What's that name?
East Texas painter.
We have one here that is Northeast Texas painting in, in Cleveland, uh, this one is one I think she said was the one.
Yeah, that's not the same.
I change this. Well, they're all, a lot of them.
East Texas painter. That has my dress on there. East Texas painter. It does. Three twenty-four. How did it get that? That's not you? You don't paint? No, that's crazy, maybe that's a. How long have you?
Oh, that's who you bought it from, exactly.
Did he live, move here somewhere else? He moved over off rapid COVID and I think he moved over long. Okay, well then we need to take him off our.
Other side of business, Pam?
Yeah.
Other side of business.
I was gonna say, he needed to go into this business, but then I told him he's such a bad painter, he couldn't do it.
So this one worked on my house. This one worked on your house?
This one worked on my house.
Which one?
Jeffrey Jones, Jeffrey B. Jones.
Okay.
Paint King renovating. And how did he do? He did okay.
He did okay.
I had another painter in the area, but yeah, well, I had one more, but he's in there.
Yeah.
Well. I love the way North Texas helped us with the bathrooms, they did a great job.
That's who did the bathrooms.
That's who did the bathrooms. But the price on this is just.
Because their last two bids.
Yeah, and they want you to pay with some money upfront for material or whatever.
Well, most, a lot of them do that, but that's just.
But hold on a second, item two on them. Do we have any spray foam insulation somewhere in there? Because essentially even the foam, every place it would be new.
Yeah, see, that's an fine strike.
That's one of the pairs.
I don't know that we want to go that bad, because I think what happened is, this building is stucco. What they did is they put up a foam thing and then they stuccoed over it. There are some cracks.
Oh, that's effus then.
Yeah.
That's effus, okay, that's one big difference.
Yeah, we really have effus, that's what we've got, you're right. Afraid you said that word, because I've been trying to think that word for a week. What is the word?
Effus.
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 It's, it's a foam board and you do your stucco on top of it. And, you know, because there's several ways to do stucco. You can do stucco with a, a mesh wire and then stucco, or you can do the foam board and stuff if it's effus. And then um, anyway, but that's what they did at this building. They took this foam board, they put it up, they stuccoed over it. There are some cracks and there's some holes in it that can be repaired. Rather than take it all down and put more up and, and Team North Texas is talking about taking it all.
Yeah.
And replacing it. And that would be.
Also include the tree?
Well, that also included the tree, but I think I've got a friend that's gonna probably take care of the tree issue. Um, there is a tree on the right side of the building and the limbs are hanging towards the roof and the building itself.
And get that.
And uh, well. This guy's gonna do it for free and all he wants is the wood. And he's a friend of ours in uh, here. Um, he does jobs like that just for the wood, because he has a, during the winter, he has a heated stove to run his house.
Yeah.
So I, I kind of mentioned it to him and he's willing to cut the tree apart.
Take off of the bid?
Um, not that much, no, not very much at all, because when they were talking to me about it, the tree issue wasn't gonna be better, I don't know.
Alright, one thing that kind of catch my eye, and putting North Texas away already. Is that none of the two left bids mention to repair cracks on the walls or whatever it is. A building that all is brick, right?
So Jefferson B. Jones is reading.
Holes.
Repair, replace holes and walls.
Holes and walls, holes is one thing and then uh, fixing the cracks before you paint, that's something else.
Yeah, they all told me they would get that, all of them told me, whenever I was talking to them, they all said that they would be repairing the cracks.
Yeah, this has to be here, none of them have them right there, so.
But just repairing plaster holes and walls?
Holes is one thing and cracks is a different one.
Oh, that's.
Because the cracks on the brick, they run like this.
Right, see that?
And they most likely run from the foundation on.
All the way up, yeah.
There's not any cracks in the brick part of it that I know of.
It's the joints of the brick.
Yeah, I know where the grout is, yeah, I know. I, I don't, I don't remember seeing any, do you, Mary?
What?
Any cracks in those bricks in that building, I don't remember seeing any. Not the bricks, but there, where the holes have been is where they did the.
Where they put the building together and they made different.
Where the stucco is and then there's a big board. There's a board that is rotted, that's between the stucco and the brick, that they're all talking about replacing.
So we have pretty much like a forty, thirty hundred versus a eight thousand, nine thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah.
So half of that.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yes.
We should get more, more bricks.
Yeah.
Twenty-five cents, twenty-five king.
What?
You have a twenty-five hundred dollar bill.
On where?
Twenty-five.
No, it is eighteen fifty at the top and twenty-five at the bottom. Labor.
The cost of the job.
That's the total.
No, that's the total of the materials.
No, the materials are five, seven, eight hundred dollars.
Material and labor combined.
It's not.
Depends on.
Material?
So five hundred plus eight hundred is most for a door and a hundred and fifty would be.
So it goes from the.
Fourteen, fourteen fifty. So.
Fourteen fifty.
And eighteen fifty.
And eighteen fifty. That's a.
It's a twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
They're allowing it.
Pining on the door.
Yeah, he could probably get him cheaper.
What door is she talking about?
Um, did the Paint King renovation, the door could be two hundred to eight hundred dollars.
Place one and down. I was.
And three hundred would be as much. And he's thinking he can do it for twenty-five.
Fifty.
There is a big difference, because we're talking forty-five to ten thousand, but there's gotta be something in, in your act. Um. Seems like this guy's a very clear about what he's gonna do. But. Paint King was the one doing the job for you that you have experience with?
People.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I will read to kind of.
He liked the town and my walk-in shower, um.
That's one.
He painted bins out of my house.
I will, I'm gonna probably revisit with that painter. And uh, kind of be a little bit more clear, because the difference is way huge.
He's probably painted all the cabinets in my kitchen, he did a great job.
Okay, no, I'm not saying that, but I, I think before we said, okay, let's go for it, get it affirmed.
Yeah, this guy, because he, he's not saying how many. Coats of primer or anything on there or how he's gonna do the job. The other guy was real specific that he's going to.
Paint up to two coats of paint on the entire exterior.
Right, the other one says he's applying two coats of primer, two coats of mason air paint. And painting the metal on the.
Well, he's saying paint up to two coats of paint on the entire exterior. That's the very last item that he has, but he also has.
That's expensive.
Replace one window, one fifty additional.
Right, and we don't have a window on the other one.
So, I mean, the numbers looks okay to me, but I just wanna make sure that, yeah, more clear that he really has the, the scope of the work nailed in. That way we don't get a fast medicine price.
I agree. Let's say he was inexpensive for her.
Right.
He was.
Huh?
Let's say it's inexpensive for her. Maybe he's gonna do it at this rate, hoping he'll get more work.
No, no, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. The thing is that we're coming from twenty thousand to nine thousand to twenty-five hundred.
I'm the pad walker contractor for twenty-two years.
So we can either be driving a Ferrari, a Toyota, or a Yugo, remember that Yugo thing? It lasted for one year.
It won't be enough. Paying that you're happy with the product.
Most of them would like to have the materials paid for first and then pay the rest of it when it comes to the painting.
But it, but it's still completed.
Exactly what we did to the site, we made fifty percent of the cost.
But isn't.
Well, that's.
So, I have, I have something that we can do.
But I do say that they didn't investigate, have a design and that, as far as I can say.
Right, the way I, the way I personally deal with vendors, especially if I have a roof or something like that, I will pay them twenty-five percent.
Right.
The deposit, when the materials show up, I give them the next twenty-five, which make it over to fifty, and then when they complete.
I like that.
Right, and because this is not.
So twenty-five, fifty and one hundred.
Materials, they can, you know, put that up for just twenty-five percent, if they couldn't cover the other twenty-five percent, that'd be concerned.
Yeah, because the other thing, the material can show up and you don't know for real if it's, they're gonna be putting a good quality material, not a surplus.
Right, and so I guess the chair's gonna entertain a motion on what we want to do here.
So, I made the motion that we speak with Jefferson B. Jones again and clarify exactly what he is proposing.
The work scope.
The, the scope of work and the costs burnt out, where it's more clear for the board to see, okay?
So, do we table this pending more information?
Yes.
And we table it until we get that clarification from him.
Um, one more thing that I want to do is, the building is empty inside, right?
Yes.
While he power wash on the outside, I will suggest that we should power wash the inside too and then deal with the paint after that. So we wanna make sure that anything that is inside the walls will migrate out and damage the painting phase outside. So I will suggest power wash in and out and then paint outside and then we take care of the rest later.
I'll wash the inside first, so it's gonna protrude, protrude.
Inside.
Okay.
What color are we painting it?
Okay, so every single one of them that I talked to, okay, every single one of them that I talked to suggested that we paint it gray.
Yeah.
A dark gray.
Yes.
Because they said that the gray would cover up the.
World of sins.
World of sins, yes. And that it was a color that blends in well with, with community. World of sins, yes, and that it was a color that blends in well with, with community. And that it would be easy to paint that color where some of the other colors that are out there would be. Will cover as well, particularly over bricks.
Yeah.
So I was kind of like, hey buddy, I'll go with the white chocolate. Every one of them that came out there told me that.
They probably have a good sell on that kind of exterior.
Well, maybe, but. But I, I like the.
I like that, that's what I want.
Yeah.
And then I would like, and then I talked to them, I would really like white trim, cause that'll make it pop.
Yeah, I will, I will suggest that before they apply the paint, they bring the color combinations.
Right.
And show it to us, so we can give us at least two or three options, and then we pick from there.
Sure.
Yeah, thousands of shades of gray.
Oh, we're on caping grades.
So we.
And once you stain it, you won't turn back.
Right. Okay, so, alright, the chair is entertaining a motion that we. Talk to Paint King and get this clarified more on cost, do I have a second on that?
I'll second, okay. Can I be second?
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay.
One thing to ask them, whenever, whoever talks to them, um, up to two coats of paint, paint is one thing.
Right.
Primer is a different thing.
Yes, it is.
So, we don't wanna just put, just paint on it because the paint won't hold till you get a good coat of color.
I'd say one coat primer and one coat paint.
It, it depends on the conditions of the building too, but if they do a good power washing.
Yeah. We'll need from you getting the price of power wash at the inside first.
Yeah, yeah, I will set one coat of primer and then two of paint.
Okay, so I'm, I'm writing this step down, so I'm gonna ask him to power wash inside first. I'm gonna ask him to bring two or three options of power, I'm gonna ask him to do one coat primer and two coats of paint.
See, I have a big plan.
And then we've got it up here already, he's gonna fix the soffit, paint my fascia, uh, he's gonna repair, repair the holes in the wall. He already had to paint up to two coats of paint on the exterior on there.
I like this gray.
Do you like that gray, it's dark, it's a dark.
Everybody, I did say they like this color.
Yeah.
You like.
There's a little bit like.
You know, well, I've got lighter ones.
A charcoal gray.
Okay, so anything else which y'all want to add for me to ask, or, you know, I talked to you.
Yeah, when they power wash the inside, ceiling and everything, since we don't have drops anywhere, so we get rid of all the spider web system.
Anything else that you want me to add?
Yeah, it's.
Even DC mini.
Yeah.
Okay, so, alright, these are shocking. Okay, alright, so, uh, so since we can't have our other sign, uh, let's see, um. I did ask for electrical sign bids, now these are not, this is only one company, so. The other companies that I asked to send me this, the bids before Friday, so I could have her ready for today, have not. So, I'm, I brought these, I'm gonna let you look at them, uh, but I'm gonna tell you right now, uh, we can't afford this company.
Have we asked by the signs?
We're, we're looking at a LED sign.
This is a digital wall, they have, where, to put where?
We just put it on our property, we're the thirteen hundred EDC, you know, thirteen hundred.
Yeah.
But what we wanted for is trying out activities.
Don't scare me like that.
I was looking for the number and I said, why did she say that it was all? I was trying, I was trying, I was trying to pay for that, but. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Does vital signs not do these types of signs?
Actually, that's where I wrote it, I'm trying to get. Okay, so what we were talking about was trying to find a sign that we could use to replace the one that we had lost money on, which was an LED sign.
Right.
And, um. This company actually makes those type of signs for a lot of other companies around.
Mm-hmm.
But if you look at the pricing on here, that would be, um, the first one would be two years' worth of our income. The second one would, which is a smaller sign, would be a year and a half's worth of our income.
Yes.
And the third one would be one year's worth of income.
Yeah.
So I kind of said to myself.
Old things and old's for three different products.
Three different sizes, one's the eight foot, the other is the ten foot, and the first.
Yeah. Crazy amount.
It's three bags or.
So, but I, I would like to table this and try to get more. Yes, more estimates and more whatever, I, yes, Harry.
There is a business going down on thirty four to Taro, uh, not, not Taro, going to, towards Brooklyn.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Um, if you're driving thirty four from here, it's gonna be on your right hand side, then through, um, earth movement and stuff, uh, for construction.
Excavating.
Excavating, and they have two big screens outside of, uh, when I swing by, I'm gonna stop by, there has to be a label or something like that there. Uh, because that is actually not too expensive, you know, like this.
Right, so what I, what I'm gonna ask the whole group to do is, if you know anybody that has one of these signs. Ask them who they got to do their signs and approximately how much it costs if they don't pay you that. And then what I would like to do is all come together and. Talk about it again and send it out again and try to get bids from every company that we can get our hands on that does this type of sign.
Yes.
Uh, I, I just think this is outrageous, uh. And I had the same reaction that Harry had when I was looking at them. I went, oh my god.
I was looking for the number on, yeah, why, why are they, I was in my head, what is Dad's complaining about, I don't see no number.
Yes.
Even if you get it, you know, get the price down to half our income, you know, we have other things we can do with that money, you know why, you waste that money on this kind of a day.
Yeah.
Don't you make such a call.
Now, there is a different route to go with that too, and here is the idea. We can actually have a, um. A, uh, a regular inside lit sign can, just like what the firefighters got.
That was a very pretty sign.
And have that one fixed, and I, I know why we would like to have this board like this, so we can actually get.
Yes.
The long.
Yes.
A screen or whatever it is, and we can actually set it up with a computer to display a specific message to it.
Yes.
Anything on an Android scroll.
And, and exactly, now, do we need to do that section now? Not necessarily, we can do it within two years, and that's gonna cost us probably five hundred, seven, eight hundred dollars, way cheaper than that.
Right, and so that's the reason I want y'all to come together, and if you have any ideas on how to get this done or for a lot less expensive. Please, let's, let's bring them to the table.
Honestly, on Amazon, you could pick up a pretty good size screen where it would be, you know, not of course billboard size or anything, I mean, you probably could, but. You know, a good decent size that you could put outside in a box, like they have the box.
Yeah, it has to be outdoor.
So, you could put it in a box like that with plexiglass over it and it's.
Yeah, I used to work for a sign company.
Larry, that sign that we have out there with the arrow, it's a box, is it not?
Yeah, well, it's a metal, it's just a metal frame.
I wonder if we could, could put something, I wonder if we could put a sign in there?
Well, we probably could, right, my idea was, I was thinking about moving that sign up to the front over there where the arrow would point, and then.
Yes, yes.
That's instead of, you know, leaving it there.
Right, that, that's what I'm thinking too, if we could maybe do something like that.
How big is the arrow?
Oh, it was an old sign that was left here, or.
Okay.
The casing for it, and it's.
The lotion.
Oh, it's big, it's big.
It's big.
It's, uh, it's five foot, five foot.
The metal portion of it, I don't, I don't, don't get too crazy about it, I mean, we can fabricate anything with metal.
Yeah.
The important thing is the actual artwork and the sign, so there's two ways, three ways to do a sign. One is what they did with the casing, like that, the other one is what James did on his, because that one is just fabric, translucent fabric. So you put the vinyl into the, uh, the, uh, the fabric, and then you lid it up from the inside.
Right.
Okay, and the next one is going to be just having individual letter casings for like a neon sign. So, to me, this one will be the ship's way.
Right.
And then second, the one that the fire department did.
Yeah, I've got this new sign on right here, I was gonna tell you that it looks wonderful. Um, the only thing that we really kind of wanted was something that we could scroll events, is the only, only thing. So we need to kind of look for online.
Scrolling signs.
Scrolling signs.
And that could be an add-on, for example, and say we have a sign structure like this, we put our sign right here.
Right.
Then we can put later on the bars.
Yeah.
Yes.
At the bottom.
And then that would be good for the sizes that you could purchase for brands and, you know.
Yeah, and for the, for the size of that building and how far it's from the street, I would recommend to elevate that sign at least ten to twelve feet at the most.
But there's a ordinance that tells how we have to have it.
I think it's seven feet.
Uh.
I think it's seven feet.
There's city ordinance.
It's, it's twenty feet.
Okay.
It's just twenty feet.
Maybe more.
Maybe more.
Of course, this was probably.
So, for the, for the, for the size of the build, and I'm telling you, I used to work for a sign company years ago. So for the size of the building and the distance from the road, I would say between ten to twelve feet high. And then you can put us a message board later on, which will be at the eight foot, seven foot mark, which is good for the driving by level.
Um, if you can be just a second, I could run and grab that ordinance out of the car.
Do you have, I think I do. Okay, cause I was gonna write it down, it's one of my things to check on tomorrow, it's.
Yeah, I think I have that as my, um, printed out in my binder, I didn't bring it.
So wanted to do that real quick, I'm gonna go over something that is not on the agenda, but I, this is just that, uh, we got our, our maps in, and I'm gonna show everybody.
No.
And I wanted to show everybody, we got our maps in, so, so pass down, all the way to. Yeah, I put some out. Our ad is on the very back page.
You've been very active today.
Yeah, Lana then.
She's P S D.
I'm. Why I can't.
Why I can't.
Larry's, Larry's a pretty.
Getting things going here.
Nice ad.
I mean, he's like, you made it in your car, and wrapped it here. And then it should be on the side of the cover, if they use that photo.
Right, yeah.
Oh, this is what they did.
Been like that a long time.
It's good, yes, I like it, however, next time, we should, we should get the, uh, the fonts for the Westside.
I'm just trying to drive.
I have to do. Come up and be a different font, that way the letters.
It was hot.
Were you guys just too.
Yeah, so what you want to move and now.
And.
We make, we make it. Yeah, beautiful.
It is.
A bad time.
But yes, okay, so we have, um, signs available.
Here's our ordinance. Spacing requirements.
Okay, spacing requirements for the thing.
It's saying that an off-premise sign has a face area of three, three, three hundred and one square feet or more. And it may not be erected within fifteen hundred feet of another off-premise sign in the same side of the road. Um.
You don't have to worry about that, we have no other.
Fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah. Um, it has to be within a hundred and fifty feet. I'm not even saying that, see.
And double face that can be.
Looking at the board, it says, it's scrolling signs.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm tall.
Oh, wow, it can't exceed overall forty two point five feet.
Oh, we're, we're pretty good, yeah.
You're home, you can go higher.
Yeah, it says it also may not, um, exceed twenty five feet above the roof level.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good.
And not less than forty percent of the gross total area may be erected at height of, you know, we don't have.
That's what we know, billboards.
Yeah. And it, at the lowest point, projecting sign must be at least fourteen feet above ground level.
Yeah.
So it has to be, okay?
I'm telling you.
Yeah.
Ten to twelve feet.
Okay, so we're getting a motion to, to this sign thing until we get more bids? Yes, correct.
Yeah, it just can't have a cutout area of more than twenty percent of the sign surface, so.
Okay, so the chair's entertaining a motion. If I make a motion that we table the sign until we receive more bids and look in further to see exactly what we want to do. And then we'll open it again.
That's a good.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, the next thing is, and guys, you're all gonna have to forgive me, because, um, the chamber. Is asking if we could possibly host either June or July lunch at the chamber, which means that we would be feeding about forty people. We would cater it, it would come out of our EDC money, and the suggestion was made that maybe we do the subway boxes, which are not very expensive to.
Like the big long?
They're, no, not the.
End of the.
They're, they're a box with, uh, a six inch sandwich and a drink and, uh, chips and a cookie.
Okay, interesting.
Yes, and I was supposed to get the prices on it to, and I didn't, so sorry, so please forgive me.
Why we don't do that to our own businesses then?
Cater the food.
Like maybe Dells would like to put something together. If we can get them to do around the same price.
Well, we think on that for them, it's, if you want to do it June or July, what is it, the third Thursday of the month? It's the third Thursday of the month, and that's two weeks away from now is when they're really wanting us to do June, we can't.
Where you guys get my point, but we want to do it for our own businesses that we want to promote, and we're doing it for something else.
Right, well.
Well, the chamber, the chamber promotes all the.
It's our businesses in town, it belonged to the chamber.
Right.
So we are kind of promoting our businesses.
And we would be the ones serving.
No, when we did the one for the fire department, that gentleman, okay, then what we did. Then what we did, we got trays of sandwiches for forty people. And then we got, I think we bought some tea, we bought just the jug of tea. And then we had chips, and then they had all the condiments with it. It was easy to pick up and then set it all up. And I think it cost us three fifty.
Three hundred.
Three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, three or three fifty.
I, I didn't check with them, and they're exorbitant.
Oh, really?
So the sandwiches are a variety of sandwiches, or what?
Good barbecue place on.
And it was.
No, 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 the one.
It was the one at the Shell station.
Oh, right.
Going.
Between Greenville and Long Island.
Uh huh, there's one on the, uh, left hand side.
In Emery.
How are you?
That's sixty-nine is Marshalls.
Yeah, going towards Greenville.
Oh, go, like if you go here to Emery and take a left?
No, if you, if you, if you cross the bridge, and then on the first one you make a left, and keep on going on that road, it's gonna take you, uh, and join sixty-nine, or it's a Mexican restaurant.
Oh, okay, yes, in Lomax and Yonah.
Lono, thirty.
Buffalo Grill.
Buffalo Grill, okay, yeah.
Not, no, not the grill.
Would you use somebody closer?
It's after that, it's just a barbecue stand, a big place there.
Oh, I would rather use somebody closer in town. She was saying the subway they used is the one at the Shell station.
Seventy-one, yeah.
And though you get a variety of sandwiches, if you could pick one.
Now, we can go to Costco and buy eight chickens. And, and get chips and, uh, chips and, uh, sodas. And just cut the chicken to five bucks apiece.
Okay, hey, so we're gonna do.
That's a lot of work.
Well, I think with July is that we have our business meeting in Grand Avenue, so the, uh, Rosenbarn and stuff.
I would rather do June for their, for their.
Anyway, some of the girls were in there, and they suggested because it was so hot to do something kind of light. And, you know, they said, they even said Brookshire's had some of the small sandwich tracts, and they said they were pretty good.
Here's what I would like to see happen, I would like to see a motion, and I can spend X amount of money towards this luncheon event. And then let me have the opportunity to try to get some prices and try to get it as cheap as can. Do you want June or July? And try to do it in June. And the reason for doing it in June is because they desperately need somebody to do the June thing. And because, uh.
They do it during the week or?
They'll do it during the week, it's our first.
On Thursdays?
Third Thursday.
At eleven o'clock.
It'd be June sixteenth.
Okay, so you need a motion, I, okay, so I make a motion that we, uh, allocate four hundred dollars for food and sponsor and host the luncheon at the Chamber for the third Thursday of June.
I second that motion.
And agree to change.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, they did recognize us last month as the, um, business nonprofit of the month last night.
Did they?
Yes, they did, and I forgot to bring the little certificate that they gave us to show you, but I thought that was really nice.
Yes.
Okay.
Are we gonna deal with that again?
What do you mean?
When we, when we do this luncheon, uh, we'll present the fee, they will give us a little time to tell a little bit about the E D C, which we will do, you know. And they thank us for doing it, you know.
And then we eat with them there.
And then we eat with them.
Make sure that we get seven premium sandwiches.
Seven premium. Now, the one thing about it, though, is we don't get to eat for free there, even though we provide the luncheon. We still have to pay the fee, which is ten dollars for, for the meal.
Alright, so make it July, come out.
Sorry, we're gonna do June.
June.
In June, in June. Okay, so, let's see, where am I at on here? Okay, um. Alright, so Harry, I did turn the channel, we need to talk about, um, challenges and hidden costs of local business, and also about.
Okay, well, um, firstly, I get the chance to make three visits to the fish and nutrition place. And I was talking to, what's her name, to?
Cassie.
Cassie, I was talking to Cassie Cassandra, that's her name. Uh, I was talking to Cassie about the challenges she's been facing so far over there. And besides operations, there are some other challenges that we as business owners can never think about. And those are the hi, that's the hidden cost of it. For example, security. She's been dealing for several times already, and she's been worried about people, a person, walking up and down the, uh, the strip. Over there, and, uh, walking randomly at different hours of the day. To the point that she came out and asked that person, are you looking for something? But she also mentions that, um, she feels insecure, she don't feel safe there. What is the driving cause for it, because I was talking to her? She was thinking of covering her glass from store with a nice pictures of different products that she sells. However, when she was telling me all of these good ideas, I said, well, hold on a second, Cassie, if you do that, nobody will be able to see from the outside if something is going on on the inside. And she was like, God, you're right. So by having lack of security, the lack of safety, we the business owners are forced to limit ourselves, and how do we promote our business? Our businesses and the money that we spend on advertising, promotion, and all of that. What is the other hidden cost behind it? Well, she was thinking about investing on a camera system, okay? Guys, think about this, she's a new business, she's struggling to survive, and now I'm saying struggling to survive, because every new business. It has a three-year window minimum, and if you goes after the third year, you can claim yourself to be a successful business.
Right.
Unless you get hit again by another pandemic.
Right.
Which is completely out of control.
Yeah.
Now, tell me how a startup business like that, that is barely making it to pay the rent. Barely making it to pay all of the utilities, and barely making it because when we all started business, we started with a dream. And we want to make this happen. However, here is a, the driving factor of it. You don't know how much effort, money, and time it's gonna take you to let the people that you exist, and to explain to them how to have the best product in town. So with that being said, that's gonna keep that mind busy enough, because you're a small business, you're a one or two man show.
Right.
Okay? To now add another headache to you, another weight on your shoulders, like, oh my God, I didn't thought about security. Uh, I didn't thought about this, I, 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 I was thinking about advertising this way, but now it's not gonna work. What other tools and resources I am going to use to attract the people when I am so far away from the highway and people are driving sixty miles an hour? How can I catch their attention?
What are your thoughts, Harry?
Then we should do. So, that's one side of the story. The other side of the story is something that I personally witnessed, an I-beam suffering from it. I think I have like three to five, uh, five police reports of it. Number one, people stealing metal from my yard. I'm talking about in their I-beams. I have already over five thousand dollars that people just stole from there, okay? So I did a quick fix, I chained them up, and that's it, because I do not have space on the inside to work with those I-beams when I have the jobs with them. Now, here's the other, the other factor. Where I have my property, I purchased the piece of land next door to it, which is in the, uh, right before the two mile storage unit. Okay? So, storage unit is here, James is right across from me, so my metal building in the next, that used to be trees in there, is, we are, we are the owners of it. Now, you may ask, Harry, why do you turn the trees down? People were doing drugs behind the trees. People were doing not only drugs, they were doing a lot of other stuff back there. And then the trees were also rotten, and all of that. Now, what is the other challenge with that? Well, people think for some reason that they own properties in here, and they were crossing with four-wheelers, trucks, and, and all of that. People walking with dogs, whatever it is, if they get hurt for any means or any reason in your property, who is like?
You are.
I am. So, and this is why I asked the question in behalf of the business owners the other day when we were at the meet and read. What are we doing here from the city perspective to help the businesses? What is the game plan for it? And, and guys, I do understand they may have a plan that they didn't want to discuss, okay? But technically, we are just dropping that weight on top of the business owners. We are here to make business, to attract customers, not to deal with business as well as the security and the safety of the people. What is the other negative driving factor into it? I have had comments that when they come and see the facility, they said, this is great, but I won't bring my expensive item in here because you have no security. Because I see X, Y, and Z type of people walking down the street.
It's gonna be evening wear though.
From doing that.
I know, we can't. But, control is control.
Sure, but we also can't put security cameras at everybody.
I, I do understand that, but I just want to bring this point, because if we are helping our businesses to be better, they only will be better if customers walk in the door. That's, that's bottom line.
That's true.
Now.
What do you, you got an idea?
In order for, at least for me, to make this happen, and this is now the hidden cost. When you are projecting the money that you're going to spend in upgrading your facilities and all of that, you're doing it a five to ten year window. You don't want to do it all at the same time, because you're gonna drain your business. Now, this situation has forced me to call off the nineteen trees I used to have there. Now, I hire a company to do that, I hire a company that they will come this week or next week to remove all of the stones. Gray the surface, because I need to put a fence in the property, we're talking six hundred linear feet of fencing on the property. The reason why I need to gray that terrain is because most of the trees is right on the fence line. Okay, so, I, I, I just want us to think about that it's not only having a dream, open the door and start selling, it's what's coming after. And I think we, as an E D C, we can actually push for, make the city to put policies in place. And, and try to make this place better and safer, not only for the business owners, but for anybody at the company.
Are you suggesting a car there, more patrols?
I'm suggesting probably having more patrols and to be transparent with the, um, strategies that they are getting in place.
The thing with that is if they tell you what they're doing, then the criminals learn to circumvent what they're doing.
Well, but once you share with the public what you're doing, the public or the citizen will start working for you for free.
Okay, but we all know, this is pretty much coming from one place. You know, because I stand up in front of the fire department and I see it all the time.
Let me take this on.
So, it's, I mean, it is, but it isn't, and it's gonna be in every town, it only seems more prevalent here because we have less citizens and less.
Units.
I, I will tell you that, um, uh, our police department, um, is really working on cracking down on the drugs.
Can you excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I left my store open.
Oh.
So, people are, they're calling.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny, thank you.
Good day, James.
We'll bring you up to speed.
Yes, we will. Um, so the police are really cracking down on the drug issue. And they have made several arrests in the last two weeks for that, which I'm thankful for, and their plan is to do more of that. Uh, I also know that, uh, they're, they're stopping people that are walking now on the roads.
Just ordering.
It's, yeah, and trying to get, you know, where are you going and what are you doing kind of thing, uh, so that's.
But having been a person that loves to walk and being stopped by an officer, just for walking in the broad daylight, like, it's very annoying. And they'll just get a little bit.
The main thing is down two seventy-six is where they're really, they're not doing it in the neighborhood.
Well, mine actually was about fifteen years ago, walking down two seventy-six.
Yeah, so.
These people are talking to themselves and.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, so some of that's going on, which I think is helpful. But yes, as an E D C, we can request, you know, that, uh, policemen stop in the businesses and check, check on people. Yeah, can we contribute to, uh, uh, a fund to actually add an additional officer, like a moonlighter or something?
I don't think they have enough money to, to have another, another officer.
Actually, we're, we're starting to work on budgets, and that's one thing that I know is going to come up this year, is I know they're going to ask for another officer.
But she, what he's talking about is no different than the problem that I had for the last twenty-five years. I worked with, uh, problem children doing hippotherapy and therapeutic therapy. So my biggest customers don't come from this area, they come from the Rockwall, Dallas, uh, area. The mothers drive them, the kids, down to me, well, when they come down through, through seventy-six and down to, uh, North Shore. They just don't like what they see. And they go home, and they talk to their husbands, and I lose my customers. And it's been going like that for, for twenty-five years. It, I don't know.
The more that we clean up two seventy-six and the cleaner it looks, the less that.
There'll be problems. I, I agree, and, and we do know where there is one area that's really got problems, and I know the police are trying to really keep an eye on that a little bit.
West to Wacken area or?
West.
Or what?
West to Wacken.
I, I do have probably an idea. Probably right now, we don't have the workforce on the police department to do it, but I do believe that we're still a small city with few businesses. Um, probably when we get to that point, we can have an officer to randomly down the week, stop by the base on the businesses, how things are doing this week for you.
Sure.
And just check on it, and then go to another business and save one. That's one suggestion. The other one, when we financially get to a better position. We may want to buy a vehicle and, uh, contract a citizen in. a citizen in here to patrol just the businesses in the surrounding areas and that person to communicate straight to the police department when an anomaly is showing up. So it doesn't have to be a police officer, but it could be like a uh uh voluntary security.
What they have a green ball uses citizens, their citizens.
Uh, citizen, yeah, voluntary, I think, there you go, something like that.
They have, they even bring in the teenagers that are in the area, like, and start to go around and.
So we can, when we get to a better financial position as an EDC, we can purchase a vehicle and then create a voluntary citizen watch club team, whatever you wanna call it.
So a, a crime watch vehicle.
We don't have to do that if we can get the good citizens that want to help the area clean to volunteer to use their own vehicles to do the crime watch. They already have neighborhood watches and they should do that.
We can start that and, and push to it and uh I guess we need to get
I mean, if they want their areas cleaned up, they wouldn't mind you clearing out.
Some kind of a training from the police department to do something like that. But, what has drive me, what is this situation has pushed me into it? It has pushed me that I, right now, I need to invest close to twenty-six thousand dollars that I was not forecasting for it. And last minute, I gotta do a lot of movement and pull money from places that I do not have. Just to protect the property, my assets, and to keep attracting the customer that it says, uh, this is not safe for me here to leave my yacht or my RV or whatever it is to do whatever job we need to do.
I talked to Farmers Electric about putting street lights up as well.
Yeah. It's very dark.
And I'll tell you something about that one too.
Yeah.
Right on Geneva, the corner of Geneva and Alamo Hall, which is the street for um rancheros. We have the house right there on that corner. It used to be a light, uh, a light from the street right there. I came here to the city to find out why the light wasn't working, I called uh Farmers Electric. And uh, they said, okay, uh, we're gonna check on it. Uh, well, you need to talk to the city because who's paying for that? Well, long story short, they ended up taking the light out. And now there's no light at all. So, I think someone here or somebody here is just passing the ball.
Sure, well, if they put in street lights, then the city would have to pay for this from electric bill, but if they would put them in for free or use the solar. Some have neon on the surface.
Now, I do have an idea that just came to me recently, I purchased, which I'm still testing. I purchased one big light that is solar for the parking lot. And I'm testing it and it works pretty good, I think each light costs about a hundred and twenty-five or something like that. So probably I have a strategy going towards that line, it'll be probably later on, the EDC or somebody buying several of those.
We might get about twenty in the pole and have them installing.
Place them on strategic bases.
That should be a security for the city.
I, I think that would be really good for the EDC to have that available for our businesses to say that we would buy you
A security.
A security light that's solar and uh.
And, and, and then they don't need to worry about or who's gonna pay for that, the city or who owns the wheel or.
He changes the bulbs, right. Right, it would be from the EDC.
You see what I'm saying? The, the power, so it's.
You got the access for the light, the installation and.
Yeah, because actually, if you try over fishing nutrition right now, it's dark.
Yeah. Dark, dark. Yeah, that's the reason she can't do her business immediately, right, right. Okay, so, I can see where the EDC could pay for the light, but the installation I think would be up to the owner.
The owner.
Yeah, but I think that would be an in uh incentive
Yeah.
For our businesses that we could offer.
And we'd have to buy the contractor to do it all.
This all has to, this all has to be brought up in front of the the board.
Yeah, because here's the.
There and everybody, this has to be brought up in, in front of them so that they, they, they know what's going on.
Right, that is a security issue for the city to, to really be dealing with, but I'm having, you can't offer that really joint forward without being able to help the businesses that are already in place with.
Sure, but you also have to have the same, you have to have the same light, the same position,
Right.
the same contractor, the same installing, so that it all happened repetitiously.
Right, you don't have here and there thing.
You know, so it would be.
The practice.
And they have to have a fourth.
Now, now, now I have an idea. Now, what can belong to? Since the lights are solar, you just need the pole or whatever the hardware to. I don't know yet, but how about to keep everything uniform? Okay, since you don't need power and feed that pole, how about if we present the idea that we, the EDC, will provide the lights? And how about if the city can come up with the pole and the base? And uh, just put, let's say, uh, in front of here, every thirty feet, one base and a pole, base and a pole, and then we solve the light, that way all, not only the business, but maybe later on the whole two seventy-six or the power is lead on.
Right, we can do this right here as an example.
Yeah, that way the city can use their workforce,
Right.
maintenance people to install those poles and all that.
I like that.
I like that.
And that way everything is uniform.
Yeah, so it's not really an incentive for the city.
So the city can go and buy two hundred poles for showing something from X, Y, and Z supplier.
Right, and that would be.
It could be straight holes or it could be the fancy ones that we sell, but whatever they want.
Yeah, okay, so, I need, especially if I can get about that product. And hopefully before choosing whose next choose to get, well, it has to be for next. Before it hurts to be seriously, you can just leave it.
I can even give you specs on that.
Yes, that's.
And I'm gonna step down too.
Okay, so I think that is actually a pretty good idea, promoting new business to come in and having two cities citizens lit up instead of startups it is.
I only, I only, I only.
Deterring. Right, incidents.
Yeah.
We're, we're thinking we'll go from there.
Right.
All right, now I'm stepping down.
I like that.
Okay, so, one of the products that I do there is I have two patents on this product here, okay? Technology to make it because it's a new product nobody has, and then the actual product itself. This is a metal privacy fencing. Could be industrial, could be residential. This product here will be no maintenance whatsoever within the next fifty years.
Love this.
Okay. Uh, can I have any colors, textures, even pictures in printed?
I don't have that, I don't have.
So this will be the first time that you can actually legally can use your fence line as your giant billboard without needing to have a program because we're protecting your property. Okay, so, over at the property that I own, that we've been having this issue, I've been forced to make the call, painful call to spend around twenty-six thousand dollars. So we can secure and do business safely and protect our assets. There is a that I have about in assets inside. And if I do move it from there, the assets will be safe. So this is why I need to secure the property. I will use my own product because I do trust my product. I am the kind of a person that I like to deal with one job, one time, forget about it.
Right.
But at the same time, this will be a driving factor, bringing more into the city. Where did you get that? Nope, manufacturer that here, okay, so give me X, Y, and Z. So, right now, we're asking for the if it can be done, the assistance of the EDC in helping us financially with something uh to help us with this humongous project. We already have into already without this eleven thousand dollars. Next week, uh, the uh excavator and that company is coming and they have a bill of six thousand just to remove the stones, make it flat, fix all of the uh levels where the water too long. So, replace the fence, the fence is not gonna be stopping the water or nothing like that. So, that's why I stepped down from there.
How much is a foot?
This guy here, uh, with the base color, which is that, it's gonna be twenty-six dollars for the foot.
Installed?
Installed, yes. Um, and then with artwork, it's gonna, of course, it's gonna be a little bit more. But, um, the reason why I would like to put this one, number one, it's gonna be complete privacy. And number two, I can advertise later on and put the also whatever rated magnets signs to it. So, I have way more samples than this, I've done samples through distant world and Universal Studios and all of that. But I just wanna bring something simple and disguised to see and uh take it to your.
What is the fence height?
Consideration. The fence height, we can manufacture anywhere from two feet or four feet.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but what do you, what do you, we're talking about?
Oh, right here, eight feet.
How?
Eight feet.
Eight feet high.
Eight feet high.
Okay, so the twenty-six dollars a linear foot, is that the eight foot tall?
Yeah.
Eight foot tall, twenty-six dollars a linear foot.
No, no, the twen- the, the twenty-six dollars, the linear foot is based at six foot.
Six foot.
But the one that I need to put right there, I leave on the side because I need to, I, I already have a fence line from the back. All right, and I need to match and do a gradual transition to it because it is based on the level of the terrain too.
Do you have a total cost then?
Twenty-six.
Is.
So, so how much are you asking from the EDC?
I will think that if I do that, it won't be correct for me, coming from my position, so I'm leaving it to you, I'm, I'm explaining to you, I'm also expanding, I'm explaining to you the reasons why and the challenges that we can clear and see. And uh, I'll leave it up to you because to me, that will be, I have to know that I even ask you how to get that looking from.
Right, and I know that there are some uh paperwork that would have to be signed before we could do that.
Yeah, the free eighty agreement.
Well, and then there's a waiver that he would have to sign. Or being able to have his position and accept.
So. If we need to.
Yeah. Yeah, we might have to talk about that.
Let's go to executive session. Real quick, uh, the time is eight fifty-seven. And uh, let's go to executive session real quick.
What time is that?
Nine thirty-seven.
Eight fifty-seven is when we went to executive session.
So, then you'll take this, you'll mute the, the little microphone right there.